Good evening.
How are you?
Hey.
Do you need a packet?
I have one.
I'll explain to you.
I have a big lot.
We have six clock, eight, six oh one. The words of the man have been.
Please, please, please. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I take it that you repeat and read the prayer. I guess we. But then follow the complete this time when we thank you for this night and thank you for our city of Oregon. So we ask God, you keep your hands on everyone here in the room. The council members are here to do business for the city. When we ask you, we guide and direct us as we do now. We ask God, you also keep your hands on our plates, our fires, our safety, all of our soldiers you brought. When we ask all of us to Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, I'll call you in order by actually Mr. Toddie for roll call.
Great partner. Here. Bonnie Winkles here. Kara Rode here. Samus Slinker. Jerry Bradley here. Jason Stewart.
Here.
Linda Smith. Hazel Riley here. Donna England. Cindy Wood. Here.
All right, we have four. First thing we need to do before we get too far in is we have a little amendment on the agenda. Number four shows a resolution. That's actually changed to the ordinance. Ordinance number seven thirty-seven. I need most of them to amend.
Most of them to amend, yes.
Much motion made by Chris Stewart, by Jerry Bradley. Any discussion? Not all the players say aye?
Aye.
Both would no? You've got a copy of the minutes from the July meeting in the packet. We just minutes will go over them. And I'm going to turn the motion to approve.
Mr. Toddie, please.
Don Eamon made a motion to approve. Chris Stewart, second. Any discussion? All the players say aye? Both would no? Stand approved. The financial report's also in the packet. If you mean to look over it.
Too much to approve.
Chris Stewart. Both would no? Financial report is approved. All right, call number four. Chief Redmond.
We've hired, and let's talk business closely, we hired two people. One, Black River Sherwood, and the other, Richson. They have hometown, uh, people for it. And then the other, Rodney Lassert, he worked at the jail. He created a long time. Councilor of the job. They started yesterday. Uh, they'll go to, well, fourteen weeks. And a ten plus academy at Black River in January. Uh, lots of good things going on too. Our radio system that was on a few months ago. Uh, hopefully, uh, on all education, we're going to get it installed or partially installed this week, finished up next week. Uh, that includes, uh, tower climbs and mobile radios, portable radios. We're pretty excited about our radio system and the platform on that. So a lot of good things happening and, uh, after the next few weeks, we probably have some more good things to work, uh, again, before they'll get, but don't make any questions. Thank you.
Can you just get the glasses off?
Those are the housing storage cameras. Uh, we won't have access to those. We'll have to, that was one thing. They're all, uh, there, I believe they had eight of them pointing up. Uh, and if they put them out, they gotta get a function to get them, and all that stuff. But yeah, that's one thing that we're, uh, that we're working on. It's a two-year project about something to be in.
Yes.
Yep, yep, which has a, uh, thing.
Chief Kepper?
Uh, we're just business as usual. Nothing special or crazy going on, so we're just firing a hammer right now. Doing what we did. See, there aren't any questions though. No?
Mr. Toddie?
No comment.
Won't work.
Okay, uh, I can make this long or short, and I've debated on how the, what all I needed to say, and I don't want to say too much, but I do want to give you an update. Uh, I'm sure all of you are aware that we've got a issue with the water and how our well here at the police station went down. Uh, had to be the pump, electric motor burned up, we had to pull that and replace it. And so we switched to the new well that's been in for about three years that we've been working to develop. And so the water has been approved, and it's safe to drink. It is typical to all the wells that are in northeast Arkansas that pull out of the Wilcox Aquifer, which runs about a thousand foot deep. Uh, it has a real fine clay in it. And the more you pump out of there, then typically it clears that up. So, uh, it was either switch to that and have the turbidity in the water that we have now, or we have no water at all. So I made the decision to do that. Uh, so we are dealing with it. Uh, we have flushed some lines and trying to take care of that. Flushing the lines is not really a big issue at this point because the water that we're putting into the system is cloudy. So flushing the line is not accomplishing anything other than if we have a place where it's standard with the hybrid flushing and whatever, if you've got something in the lines, uh, if they call us, tell us they've got trash in it, uh, something like that, we do flush that. Uh, but other than that, if the water's just cloudy, we, it's clear we are not. Uh, the mayor and I went out one afternoon and just flushed him, and he pulled some samples looking to see, and didn't see a lot of difference between when we first start and when we finish starting. But anyway, the good news is, talked to the well company yesterday, they expected to have the parts in yesterday and rebuild our pump, and he told me, thought that they would have that back in service this week. And so when we go back into that well, then I believe that we'll go back to the same water that we had before this all started, and then we will go back to pumping that well off. The one that we've been using, we've been pumping off for, they were working on it before I came here. So for a year and a half, we've been pumping on it. The water's tremendous now than it was when I came to work here. So I think that it's going to work out. Uh, I think we're going to be able to use it when we get our new treatment plant and stuff to work up. Uh, not much of a Facebook fan, uh, don't get on it very much, but I've been on it more than the last two weeks than I have in the last two years, trying to talk about what's going on. Lot of misinformation going out there from not, us not giving any information out, to giving out false information, to lying about it, the water's not safe, it's whatever. Uh, I think the mayor's done an excellent job of trying to put that out there on our channel, on YouTube, whatever it is that we have available there, and put the information out. The information that he started with is the same information that I just gave you, is what we stand with right now. The story has not changed. And so he's done that. Channel eight has been up here four times doing interviews. Channel three's been up here. The health department's been up here, pulled samples from the well, pulled samples from the first batch of charts. Everything's been cleared. Uh, I'll assure you that if we thought there was something wrong with the water, we would have been announcing that, and it needed to be boiled, you needed not used it, you needed to whatever. We hate it. I hate it personally that the water looks like that it does. And I'm not saying that it's great. I'm saying that it is safe, and I had rather had that in my house as not to have anything. So that's where we stand for that. Uh, noted, I'm not sure you noticed that we had garbage and limbs piling up. Our knuckle boom truck was in the shop for three weeks or a little better, being worked on. Uh, we put guys out manually trying to pick that stuff up, and you just cannot replace that knuckle boom. But it's back in service. Excuse me. It's back in service, and so we're trying to get it, we're playing catch-up. Gets a little while longer, we'll get that done. So when we pull guys off mowers and weight eaters to be picking up trash, so now the grass has got kind of a little head of us. Uh, the Lord has helped us a little bit with that, and it's not growing quite as fast as it was. So anyway, we're hopefully getting everything back on track, uh, get everything cleaned up, looking good, water looking good, and I hope everything will be fine. Other than that, if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to address them.
Uh, committee reports. And we don't have any unfinished business. Now we're going to do business. Uh, first on the agenda, resolution number twelve fifty-five. Uh, this is a resolution for go bidding and advertise a request for qualification for grant rider. Uh, we can use procurement for this stuff, and there's several that are ongoing. We'll give them opportunity to send some RFQs, and I just need permission to advertise. Chris Toddie, will you read resolution number five, please?
A resolution that the city council, has the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas, in accordance with Arkansas code and paid nineteen eleven eight oh one exact, to undergo competitive bidding for certain other professional services specifically to contract for professional grant writing, consulting, and lobbying for the city, to authorize the publication of a request for qualifications and for other purposes to win. Being resolved by the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas as follows. Whereas Arkansas state law requires that for the procurement of certain goods and services, a political subdivision must utilize competitive bidding, and whereas Arkansas code and paid nineteen eleven eight oh one exact, provides that competitive bidding be used in the procurement of certain professional services, and that for other professional services not specifically set out in Arkansas law, that a city may go competitive bidding and utilize the request for qualifications procedure to procure professional services after a two yards vote of this council to go competitive bidding, and whereas the city of Truman has an immediate need to contract with a grant writer to, for the purposes of preparing and submitting applications for the procurement of financial benefits and incentives, including without limitation grants for which the city of Truman may be eligible from federal, state, and non-governmental sources, and to ensure state grants and financial benefits which the city may receive are administered in accordance with all applicable laws, rules, and regulations. And whereas the city of Truman has several existing and projected projects for which grant funding and other financial benefits would be helpful, further, there is an immediate need to procure financial benefits for the city may be eligible, and therefore, in emergency, assist with respect to contract with a grant writer to assist the city in applying for obtaining and administering said financial benefits. Therefore, being resolved by the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas to win, that the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas finds with Arkansas code and paid nineteen eleven eight oh one exact, that it is in the best interest of the city to go competitive bidding, as it relates to contracting for professional grant writing, consulting, and for the purposes of applying for obtaining and administering all financial benefits, whereas the city of Truman may be eligible, whether from federal or state governmental and non-governmental sources, that the city of Truman should request qualifications and set up competitive bidding, and that the mayor is authorized to publish, in accordance with Arkansas law, a request for qualifications requesting qualified applicants to submit qualifications to contract with the city of Truman providing services specifically described herein. All right, last meeting with us, and approved the contract TruGo bus to run a one-day route to Bay. We're going to give another month of comments before passing the resolution. Uh, having signal negative comments, uh, we have resolution twelve fifty-six to approve that contract. And I'd like Ms. Toddie, if she would read that resolution, please. A resolution authorizing the city of Truman, Arkansas to enter into a contract to provide one-day TruGo bus service to the city of Bay, Arkansas. Whereas the city of Truman, Arkansas recognizes the need to enhance transportation services for the residents of the neighboring community of Bay, Arkansas, and whereas providing a one-day bus service to Bay, Arkansas will improve access to essential services for community connectivity and foster economic and social ties between the two cities. And whereas the city of Truman has assessed the logistical and financial feasibility of providing such a service, and has determined that it is both practical and beneficial to the community, and whereas the city of Bay, Arkansas has expressed interest and support for the implementation of this bus service, pay the one-day salary of the TruGo bus driver. Now, therefore, being resolved by the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas, one, authorization to enter contract, the mayor and city clerk of Truman, Arkansas are hereby authorized to execute and deliver a contract with TruGo to establish a one-day bus service to Bay, Arkansas. Two, service details, the bus service shall operate on a schedule determined by the mayors of all cities, ensuring convenience and accessibility for residents of both Truman and Bay. Three, funding and budget, the costs associated with this bus service shall be as follows. Riders getting on the bus in Bay will pay five dollars and then fifty cents every time they get on the bus in Truman. Any rider that gets on the bus in Truman to ride out to Bay will be required to pay a five dollar fee if they did not ride the bus from Bay to Truman. The city of Bay will also pay the TruGo driver's salary each day that service is provided to Bay. Four, review and evaluation, the city council shall review the effectiveness and usage of the bus service on a regular basis to ensure that it meets the community's needs. Adjustments to the service may be made based on this evaluation. Five, implementation timeline, the mayor and city clerk are directed to expedite the contract and aim to implement the bus service within a reasonable timeframe, ideally within the next three weeks. Being further resolved, that this solution, this resolution may be in full force in fact from and after its passage and approval.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Toddie made a motion, Jerry Bradley, second.
Any discussion?
I do, I do, I do like, I do hear one more, and then, 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 and And when this, when this does come about and they set the date and time for the ceremony, then we'll make sure everybody knows and be there at the same time. All right, next is ordinance number seven thirty-seven. This is one of the things that came to put on the resolution, thanks for the ordinance. This is, the budget committee has recommended a job description to be written up or updated with city clerk and to pay adjusted for that position. Ms. Hotty and I, along with Mr. Gascoigne, away, updated the job description that fell out in this ordinance. Ms. Hotty is already doing these jobs as well as being available for assistance in other duties in the, in the office. In 2024, she averaged fifty-nine point oh-seven hours per month working. The budget committee believes that if all the work is done, that it required of the city clerk that position should be compensated at a thousand dollars per month. Ms. Hotty has done more than what the job description has laid out and is deserving of this compensation. I also believe that any clerk that does what is required by the ordinance should be compensated in this matter. Ms. Hotty, would you read ordinance, please?
An ordinance of the city of Truman, Arkansas, established, established she, the job description and pay for the elected part-time Truman city clerk position. Whereas, the city of Truman cannot clearly define the responsibilities and compensation for the elected position of city clerk. And whereas, the city desires to ensure that the duties of the city clerk are performed efficiently and effectively. And whereas, necessary to establish a formal job description and pay rate for the part-time city clerk position. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of Truman, Arkansas, section one, establishment of job description. Job title, city clerk, elected. Location, city of Truman, Arkansas, Department of Administration. FLSA status exempt. Job summary, the city clerk of the city of Truman, Arkansas is a vital elected administrative role responsible for maintaining official city records, preparing and recording city council meeting minutes, as well as committee meeting minutes and ensuring compliance with state and local regulations. The city clerk serves as a liaison between the city government, residents, and other stakeholders, providing essential support to the mayor and city council. Key responsibilities, record-keeping and document management. Maintain and safeguard all official city records, including ordinances, resolutions, contracts, and minutes of the city council meetings and committee meetings. Ensure proper indexing, filing, and retrieval of city documents. Manage public access to city records in accordance with the Arkansas Freedom of Information Act. City council support, prepare a juvenile package that will serve as city council meeting. Attend all city council meetings and access living room minutes. Disseminate approved minutes and other relevant documents to council members and the public. And authority, public relations and communications. Serve as a point of contact for residents, businesses, and other stakeholders regarding city policies, procedures, and services. Respond to public inquiries and provide information and assistance as needed. Assist and coordinate public notices, advertisements, and announcements. Four, compliance and legal affairs. Assist in the preparation and review of city ordinances and resolutions. Work with legal counsel on matters pertaining to city government, governance, and administration. Five, additional duties. Assist other city departments as needed, such as, but not limited to applying for everyday and free city membership to ensure efficient and effective city operations. Physical demands of work environment. Work is primarily performed in an office city with frequent interruptions. Must be able to lift and carry files and documents weighing up to twenty-five pounds. Occasional travel may be required for training and professional development. This job description is intended to provide a general overview of the position and does not encompass all the qualifications required. The city of Truman reserves the right to modify this job description at any time. Section two, compensation. A part-time city clerk shall be compensated at a rate of one thousand dollars per month. Section three, effective date. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval with the pay requested by the finance committee to be retroactive to July first, 2024.
Do you hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Jerry Bradley, make a motion, here, second.
Second.
Cindy Wood, second. Any discussion? I do want to want this out and make it fact. That Ms. Hotty, devil mentioned, matter of fact, she never asked me anything. She did not ask for this. She didn't ask me anything. Hold the. First few months, she was in office, I know several times she was spending at the office. December, where I was asked her to give me a time sheet each month that were coming up with fifty-nine point oh-seven hours that she worked per month. And I saw what she was doing and I went to the committee and I said, this is what she's doing. Y'all make a decision. And they made the decision. That, that's what they want to recommend. All right, any discussions?
I would like to say that I have gone to or I have asked for information that she has always been very, she will look it up and let me know if there's any problems that, that it could be a problem or not. I appreciate it, isn't it?
That it is? All right, if not, Ms. Hotty, roll call, vote please.
Brett Parker.
Court.
Connie Winkless, court. Kara Rodd, court. Amy Slender, absent. Jerry Bradley, court. Jason Stewart, court. Linda Smith, absent. Hazel Riley, court. Donnie Eman, court. Cindy Wood, court.
All right, this will move on to the September council meeting for the second reading. All right, let's see. Next, this resolution number twelve fifty-nine. The council voted to contract one for ambulance services here in town. You should have a copy of the negotiated contract. There were just a few, a couple of changes that I requested to be made. And you'll see those in yellow, you know, when you get that, you get the contract. Those changes are in yellow. We negotiated a agreement with those with medic one. They have agreed to those changes. And of course, those are all changes that's in our paper of my benefit. So I'll give you just a minute if you want to look at those. Couple of changes are just clerical, they have to save Maryland, which is Arkansas, and they created county, and that's the council. All right, Ms. Hotty, would you read the resolution, please?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas, approving a contract to join the city of Truman and medic one ambulance service. Whereas, the city of Truman has a major contract with, for the provision of ambulance services to protect the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the city of Truman. And whereas, the city of Truman has reviewed various proposals that have been submitted and reviewed by the council. And after a review of the submitted proposals, the city council finds that medic one is best suited to certain needs of the residents of the city of Truman. Now therefore, be resolved by the city council of the city of Truman, Arkansas, to wit, one, the city council, after reviewing the same, hereby approves the contract submitted by medic one for five ambulance transport services for the residents of the city of Truman, Arkansas, and authorizes the mayor to execute the contract on behalf of the city of Truman. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
I hear motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
If you would make a motion to approve. Jerry Bradley, second. Any discussion?
Before you guys vote on this, I'd like to be heard. And I apologize, some of this looks like it's changed from what I originally saw.
The only thing that changed was the yellow, because I came directly from this.
And so I apologize because I apparently missed this, but there are just a few things in here. I, I could never advise anyone to sign or to re-read them specifically on the indemnification of the city. That's the city having to pay back medic one in the event that both of them receive. And basically, what it says is, city shall indemnify and hold medic one harmless from and against any and all third-party liability, losses, damages, claims, cause of action expenses connected therewith, including reasonable attorney's fees, collective with claims. Cause, this is the language that I cannot agree with. Or asserted to have been caused directly or indirectly by, or as a result of any gross negligence by the city. Well, it's one thing if it was caused by the gross negligence of the city. It's a completely other thing if it's simply to assert it to have been caused by the city. Because all someone has to do is make an assertion that the city caused it and then the city has to indemnify them. And why I really have a problem with that is, is because that is not the same obligation they put on themselves in having to indemnify the city if they're responsible. You read theirs, it's shall indemnify the city from all third-party claims asserted. Oh, it does actually cause or assert it by the gross negligence of medic one. In fact, it is. But I would never agree to having to indemnify medic one simply because someone asserted that the city did something wrong. It's one to have to be found that the city did in fact cause the issue before we ever pay them back, not simply based on an assertion of the same. Missed that? I'm sorry, I would not agree to that. The other thing I wouldn't agree to?
On the bottom. That's on page.
On page four. The other thing I wouldn't agree to, medic one is dedicated to the quality of services it provides and shall perform its services under this agreement in material compliance with all applicable federal, state, local laws, regulations, statutes, tortures. Well, material compliance doesn't mean full compliance. Now, we expect them to abide by the law, not kind of by the law. Not mostly by the law, but we expect them to comply with the law as it's, as we have to do. I don't agree with material compliance, that would be taken out. And I apologize that I missed all of this and that I just bring it to y'all's attention, but I feel like that they tried to be, be a little bit sneaky by inserting some of these words. I wouldn't sign it like that. If y'all want to approve it with those changes, I would feel much more comfortable with it. But again, I just apologize that I missed it. If you want to give, if you want to amend the resolution to give the mayor the authority to enter into this contract with, with those changes, then I would be much more comfortable with it. But, and the other thing is, is what I recall, at least in a discussion, I don't see it in here. The other thing to get to be concerned about with agreements like this is, what happens if you want to get out? Because, you know, the divorce is always the trickiest part. And if you ever decide you want, well, the term and termination portion of this talks about the right to terminate the agreement in the event of the other party's breach of this agreement. You have to get thirty days written notice. Then they have thirty days to essentially cure it, if it can be cured. Then upon a second written notice from the non-breaching party, the breaching party disagrees, it shall terminate. And then there's an automatic termination. And that's if you're involuntarily excluded from participation in Medicare or Medicaid. In other words, they want to make sure they get paid. And if for some reason you're not able to participate in that, they want to make sure they get paid, they can get out. It automatically terminates. Bankruptcy. An assignment for the benefit of creditors. Files a petition or an answer seeking reorganization for creditor purposes. Otherwise filed against the party. Any assets related to bankruptcy, reorganization. And the point is, I understood that there was going to be a provision that we could get out of this just because we wanted to after giving notice. There was a discussion about that at some point. And I don't see that in there. I would want a provision in there that at some point, because we're just not satisfied with the service that you're providing. Not that you breached anything, we're just not happy. You're not getting there on time, you're not doing these things as we would like it to be done. Not saying you breached it, but we're just not happy with the service y'all are providing. We need to be able to get out. And based on the way this is written right now, it's going to require a breach and then they get the opportunity to cure the breach. Or you have to make one of these automatic termination provisions. I don't think that any of them are likely to, probably that likely to happen. And so, again, and I apologize that I missed it. I remember we did have some discussions about it. One of the things that I said was, as long as there's a provision to make sure we can get out if we want to get out. And I thought that was going to be in there, it's not in there. And I apologize that I missed that. But I understand the need to contract and that we need to do that quickly. But I would want to, wouldn't sign it like this. Y'all want to give the mayor the approval to sign it with those changes tonight? That's the will of the council. And y'all can do that, but it needs to, in my opinion, it needs to have those changes. I apologize that I just now bring it.
Well, I'm going to make the recommendation that we table it. And that Mr. Gascoigne, that's the way you go through it and just make the changes that need to be made. He feels, after all, he's already the counselor, he's the advisor. And make the changes that he feels like needs to be made. And then we'll bring it back to the next council meeting. Their, their original schedule is November first to twenty twenty-four when it's going to affect. And so we can have this done next council meeting and still be done on November, whatever. Now, the only thing that I'm, I guess I'm asking, I don't, I don't know if I have to get this approval, but I always want to go through y'all's stuff like this. If Mr. Gascoigne gets the agreement drawn up, they approve the agreement, then give them the permission to go ahead and start working on the building with their hands. Does anybody have a, have a problem with that? They're, they're going to be the ones responsible for, for upgrading the ambulance base of the building and get the clean up, tighten it, and all that stuff. Now, that was one of the things, wanting to go ahead and get this done so that they can get started. So now have it ready to go. That's when the contract moves into place.
I think, I know there's changes that he was suggesting. Thank goodness they took out there. And I think that we should, we like to sort of have. Make a motion.
We approve them working on the building once they agree to. Who made the motion to approve it, Bill?
Cindy. So I just need to withdraw that motion?
Yes, please.
Or would just make it pretty good? Who made it?
Cindy had approved to withdraw her motion. And Jerry, second, you withdraw your second.
I agree.
And then withdraw the second. Now, you can make the motion.
I make a motion that we make the changes and then go ahead and get through the building.
You got a motion? Make a second. Hold on. Justice Stewart, second, discuss. My motion is that Mr. Gascoigne makes changes. And when we present it to them, once they approve those changes, then they would be allowed to go ahead and start working on the building that it doesn't need to base. Make a motion in a second, any discussion? All the players say aye. Opposed, no.
Fair enough. And again, I apologize, all the council for not having this, not bringing this prior to tonight. But I just don't want the city in a bad position. And we better get it right and sign something that puts us in a bad position. And I appreciate that. And that's long as you pay you the good bill.
Twelve fifty-nine on the table. All right, next up is ordinance number. Next up is ordinance number seven thirty-six. This ordinance would have a question put on the ballot. This is not a proven, this proven to have it put on the ballot. Asking for approval and advertising and promotion of our AP tax. We discussed this a little bit in the past. Proceeds with this tax would go to partial recreation, as fell out by state statute. This would be on the Old River ballot. Just a little information, according to Placer AI, which is a program that, that monitors visitors to business use in different locations. Approximately eighty percent of the visitors at our hotels are from out of town. About three percent of taxes will be coming from out of town people to help with all parts of recreation. Plus, one percent from fast food restaurants, just under fifty percent, I think it's like forty-seven point eight, something like that, of the visitors to our fast food restaurants come from out of town. It's also according to Placer AI. So again, we're having many people from out of town helping us pay for our parks and we're hoping that soon we'll be able to add to our recreational areas with this tax. New grant riders, new facilities, better well-being under. This ordinance does have an emergency clause because we have to, we have to pass it tonight. If we're going to pass it, we get it on the ballot. It has to be done on the same day, but the election day. This ordinance was taken from the city of, rights ordinance that recently passed. This ordinance was taken from the City of Premon, a rights ordinance that recently passed. And with the emergency clause in the ordinance and the motion, the vote will be, will approve the clause. Ms. Todd, we can read the ordinance, please.
An ordinance calling and setting a date for a special election establishing an advertising and promotion commission for the City of Premon, Arkansas, levying gross receipts tax pursuant to the Arkansas Advertising and Promotion Commission Act and ACA 2675-601 through 2675-619, and for other purposes with emergency clause. Whereas tourism is one of the largest industries in the United States, and whereas as part of a major economic development, it is imperative that the City of Premon, Arkansas, here and the city, has every opportunity to participate in available tourism dollars. And whereas a hotel and restaurant tax will enable the city to continue and expand its tourism promotion programs and projects to further enhance the revenues and other benefits derived from tourism, and to thereby improve the quality of life for all residents of the city. And whereas the purpose of this ordinance is to call a special election to establish an advertising commission and levy a gross receipts tax pursuant to the authority of the Arkansas Advertising and Promotion Commission Act. Now, therefore, be it a name by the City Council, the City of Premon, Arkansas, Section 1, that there be, and there is hereby called a special election to be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2020, determined by a vote as qualified electors of the City of Premon, Arkansas, the question of whether to establish an advertising and promotion commission for the City of Premon, Arkansas, and to levy gross receipts tax pursuant to the Arkansas Advertising and Promotion, Advertising and Promotion Commission Act. Section 2, that the question shall be placed on the ballot for the special election in substantially the following form. Question 1: There is submitted to the qualified electors of the City of Premon, Arkansas, the question of the establishment of an advertising and promotion commission for the City of Premon, Arkansas, and levying gross receipts tax pursuant to the Arkansas Advertising and Promotion Commission Act. Tax levying. A: A tax in the sum of 3% shall be levied upon one, the gross receipts or gross proceeds from leasing or otherwise furnishing a hotel, motel, cabin, bed, and breakfast campground, short-term condominium, or other similar rental accommodations for sleeping needed or party rent facilities for profit in such city or town. But such accommodations shall not include the rental or living expenses of such accommodations for periods of 30 days or more. And B: A tax in the sum of 1% shall be levied upon one, the portion of the gross receipts or gross proceeds received by restaurants, cafes, cafeterias, delicates, drive-in, drive-in restaurants, carryout restaurants, the essential stands, convenience stores, grocery store, restaurants, or similar businesses, as shall be defined in the levying ordinance from the sale of prepared food and beverages for on-premises or off-premises consumption. But such tax shall not apply to such gross receipts or gross proceeds or organizations qualified under 26 U.S. C. 501(c)(3). C: The taxes levied herein shall take effect on the 91st day following the deployment of the commission to the City of Premon, Arkansas, Advertising and Promotion Commission, and shall be remitted pursuant to this such rules and regulations as may be promptly obligated by the commission. Definitions: The following definitions shall apply with respect to the interpretation of this ordinance. The words hotel, motel, condominium, restaurants, cafes, cafeterias, delicates, drive-in, carryout restaurants, convenience stores, grocery store restaurants, and food delivery business shall have their commonly accepted accomplishments, and shall apply to business establishments and activities affected by this ordinance regardless of the name or characterization applied by the owner or operator of such establishment or business activity. D: Taxpayer shall name the person, firm, or corporation owning and/or operating any establishment or business activity upon which the tax levied by this ordinance is imposed. The term taxpayer shall be included in all purposes of this ordinance, including the individual who actually signs any report of tax collected pursuant to this ordinance or who signed or are federal withholding or gross receipts tax reports for any business establishment or activity upon which the tax levied by this ordinance is imposed. City of Premon Advertising and Promotion Commission established, the City of Premon Advertising and Promotion Commission is hereby established, this commission shall be composed of seven members and sponsors. A: The four members shall be owners or managers of businesses in the tourism industry, and the owner or manager may reside outside the City of Premon, but shall reside within Pointe County. At least three of whom shall be owners or managers of hotels, motels, or restaurants that who shall serve for a staggered terms of four years. Two members of the commission shall be members of the governing body of the City of Premon who shall be elected by the City Council and shall serve at the will of the City Council. And one member shall be from the public at large who shall reside in the City of Premon and shall serve for a term of four years. D: The initial members of the commission shall be selected as follows. A: The four tourism industry positions provided for in this, in subdivision of this section shall be nominated by the mayor and approved by a majority vote of the City Council for staggered terms, so that one member will serve for a term of one year, one member will serve for a term of two years, and one member will serve for a term of three years, and one member will serve for a term of four years. The industry positions will be allocated to the one, two, three, and four-year term based on a random drawing by the appointees. D: The two members of the commission who are members of the governing body of the City of Premon shall be selected by a majority vote of the City Council. C: And the enlarged position provided for in subdivision 1 of this section shall be selected by the mayor with a concurrence of a majority vote of the City Council. D: Vacant seats on the commission, whether resulting from the expiration of a regular term or otherwise in any of the four tourism industries, or the enlarged position shall be filled by a one that may be by the remaining members of the commission with the approval by a majority vote of the City Council of the City of Premon. The City Council of the City of Premon may remove any member of the commission by a two minutes' vote upon 30 days' notice of intent to take such vote prior to such votes occurring. D: Each member of the commission shall file the oath required by a law in the State of Arkansas of public officials, organization of the commission. A: The commission shall meet within two weeks of its appointment and shall be organized by a elected chairman, secretary, and treasurer. Thereafter, the commission shall meet, as often as may be necessary, and shall also be subject to a special call by the chairman of the commission. The commission shall meet at least five annually. D: The commission shall have the authority to employ the necessary personnel to assist in the administration and operation of the City of Premon Advertising and Promotion Commission Act, or make contracts with qualified firms that for the City of Premon or functions of administration and operations. C: The commission shall make orderly reports to the mayor of the City Council beginning three months, reporting in full of the operations of the commission, including an accounting of receipts and disbursements, and shall, upon request of the City Council, per such other and further reports and data, as may be required. The commissioners shall select the recognized auditing firms who submit an annual audit of the operations of the commission to the mayor and to the council. The commission may contract with the auditing firm that the City of Premon retains for its audit purposes. Collection of tax. A: The tax shall be made by the taxpayer and shall be collected by the commission or by an designated agent of the commission in the same manner and at the same time as the tax levied by the Arkansas Gross Receipts Act of 1941 as amended. D: Taxpayers shall collect the old tax levied from the purchaser or user of the food or accommodations. Taxpayers paying the tax shall report and remit the tax collected upon forms provided by the commission and as directed by the commission, but if not even event later than the 20th date of the month following the collection of the previous month's taxes. C: The rules, regulations, forms of notice, assessment procedures, and enforcement and collection of the tax under the Arkansas Gross Receipts Act of 1941 as amended, and Arkansas Tax Procedure Act as amended shall, so far as practical, applicable, be applicable with respect to the enforcement and collection of the tax levied. However, the administration, enforcement, and all actions shall be filed and in the name of the commission through the proper commission officials and core agents. The commission shall have the authority to sue and be sued in its name. The commission shall, for the purposes of collecting the tax levied, have all the power and authority stated in Arkansas Code and Tate Section 2675-603, as hereafter amended from time to time. D: The commission is authorized to pursue all revenues for tax collection and enforcement as identified in Arkansas Code and Tate Section 2675-603(c)(3), and specifically meets the requirements of subsection F as may be amended from time to time by the Arkansas General Assembly. E: Shall be lawful for any person, business, or entity subject to the AFP tax to transact a business within the City of Premon prior to the issuance and receipt of an AFP tax permit from the commission. A: A separate AFP tax permit must be obtained from the commission for each location where as the person, business, or entity condenses business that is subject to the AFP tax. An AFP tax permit shall have no stated term. And C. Any person, business, or entity subject to the AFP tax transacting business in the city shall file with permission and application for an AFP tax permit in the business and the form and contents of which application shall be prescribed by the commission time to time. D: The AFP tax permit shall not be assailable and shall be valid only for the person, business, or entity whose name it is issued and for the location there designated. And the AFP tax permit shall at all times be conspicuously displayed at the location there on designated. The AFP tax permit shall expire at the time of cessation of the business, of the person, business, or entity designated thereon. And the commission shall pro- probably obligate rules and regulations to fulfill the purposes of enforcement and collection of the tax levied herein as it needs necessary and as allowed by Arkansas Code as may be amended from time to time by the General Assembly within 60 days of formation of the commission. The grant of authority is to authorize the commission to exercise all rights and privileges in the collection and enforcement of the tax levied herein to the greatest extent permitted by Arkansas law. Administration of funds. A: There is hereby created the City of Premon Advertising and Promotion Fund, to which fund there shall be credited all collections of tax levied. D: The commission is the body that determines the use of the City of Premon Advertising and Promotion Fund that is designated to the city park system. C: Funds credited to the City of Premon Advertising and Promotion Fund shall be used for the construction, reconstruction, extension of equipment, improvement, maintenance, repair, and operation of the city park system, or for the payment of the principal of interest on expenses and expenses in connection with bonds associated with such projects. D: Funds credited to the City of Premon Advertising and Promotion Fund shall be used to cover administrative costs associated with collecting and managing the funds collected. E: The funds credited, accredited to the City of Premon Advertising and Promotion Fund shall be used for advertising and funding the city and its endurance, as shall determine, shall be determined by the City of Premon Advertising and Promotion Commission Fund and pursuant to Arkansas Code and Tate Section 2675-606(a)(2), as may be amended from time to time. If the commission determines that funding of the arts is necessary for or supporting of its city's advertising and promotion endeavors, it can use a fund to run the hotel and restaurant The commission may not use proceeds from the tax for (a) general capital improvements with the city, (b) the costs associated with the general operations of the city, and (c) general subsidy of any civic groups or chamber of commerce. H: The commission may contract with groups to provide the commission and actual services that are connected with tourism events or conventions, and the authorization and limitations contained in the subsection shall be reasonably construed, so as to provide funds for promoting and encouraging tourism and conventions while not allowing such special revenues to be utilized for expenditures that are normally paid for general revenues of the city. I: The funds collected pursuant to the tax's levied and allocated to the City of Premon Advertising and Promotion Fund may be used for any purposes identified and authorized in Arkansas Code and Tate Section 2675-606, as may be from time to time by the General Assembly of the State of Arkansas. Vote on the question by placing an X in one of the squares following the question, either four or hands. For: The establishment of an advertising and promotion commission for the City of Premon, Arkansas, and levying gross receipts tax pursuant to Arkansas Advertising and Promotion Act. Against: The establishment of an advertising and promotion commission for the City of Premon, Arkansas, and levying gross receipts pursuant to Arkansas Advertising and Promotion Commission Act. Section 3: That the elections shall be held and conducted in the both chambers and the results declared under the law and in the manner now provided for Arkansas municipal special elections unless otherwise provided in the next 626 of 1989. And only qualified voters of the city shall have the right to vote at the election. The city clerk is hereby granted to give notice of the special election by one advertiser and the Jonesville son, the publication, to be not less than ten days prior to the date of the election. Section 4: That a copy of this ordinance shall be given to the Pointe County Board of Election Commissioners, as that the necessary election officials and supplies may be provided. Section 5: That the results of this special election shall be proclaimed by the mayor, and his proclamation shall be published one time and the Jonesville son. The proclamation shall advise that the results as proclaimed shall be conclusive unless challenged in a certain court of Pointe County within 30 days after the date of publication of the proclamation. Section 6: That the mayor and the city clerk for and on behalf of the city's lead and vague about are authorized and permitted to do any and all things necessary to call and hold the special election as herein provided, and if the establishment of an advertising and promotion commission for the City of Premon, Arkansas, levying gross receipts tax pursuant to Arkansas Advertising and Promotion Commission Act is approved by the electors to perform all acts of whatever nature necessary to carry out the authority conferred by this ordinance. Section 7: All ordinances and resolutions, in part thereof, incomplete, in whole, or in part, within any of the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section 8: If any provisions of this ordinance for the application, if any person or circumstance is held invalid, such impunity shall not affect the other provisions or applications of this ordinance, which can be given effect without the invalid provision or application, and to this end of provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable. Section 9: Emergency clause: That it is hereby ascertained and declared that there is a critical need to obtain additional funding, all in order to promote and protect the health, safety, welfare of the inhabitants of the city. It is therefore declared that, if the election exists and this ordinance being necessary for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety, shall be enforced and effective immediately from and after its passage.
Little mouthful.
Sure. My gosh.
I've got, I've got an issue that I think that needs to be dealt with, that I probably won't call to issue. One little one, not, not going to be an issue that can be treated, but on page two. Two, under definitions, the taxpayer shall be a person, firm, or corporation. That should be owning, not owing. So if we do approve this, that, that be changed. Where is that, Mr.? On page two, under definitions. And D, taxpayer, first line of taxpayer, shall be a person, firm, or corporation, owing. Now, the big, the big question, and I think this is going to be an issue, in the section where it says the vote on the question, placing square, following the question, either four or
or against, and Mr. Gasway can correct me if I'm wrong, and there it well could be, but, uh, nowhere in the for or against does it state or establish the amount of taxes to be charged. So, that's a great point, and when I talked with the district league about this, because we were looking at some different ordinances, uh, as we were developing this, the other cities that passed to make sure that we did this correctly. And there was, there are a couple things, you could, you could pass a living ordinance, and then you could pass a separate ordinance going to the special election, or you could put them all in the same one. And so, the part that appears on the ballot is a question for me, and I said, well, what they would actually vote for or against is down here at the bottom of section two. And the district league said, yeah, that's because all of section two will be on the ballot. So, what will act, so what you'll see on the ballot will be starting under section two, question one, there is submitted to the poll by electors, the city of Truman, Arkansas, the question to be established in the Advertising and Promotion Commission for the city of Truman, Arkansas, living, grocery, taxes, the Arkansas Advertising Commission Act. Tax living, and here it explains that it's a three percent on essentially accommodations, and a one percent on essentially prepared foods. And so, it will be explained to the voters in the bottom of what's on the ballot, fifty percent and a one percent, now they have to actually read that, send it. When you get down to what they actually marked, then it's, you're either for that or you're against that. But they're, all of section two will be on the ballot. And, you know, that's a lot for people to read, they can read it, not read it, and they'll get to the end of it, and they will vote for or against. But I asked them, you know, do we have to put in the for or against, the three percent, one percent, because some of the ordinances, other ordinances that we looked at the other season time, it appeared in the for or against, but they didn't have a big explanation either that actually appeared on the ballot. This whole explanation's gonna appear on the ballot with all the definitions. Well, that answers that. Take security on that issue as far as the legality is not addressed. Uh, one of the things that I wanna note is, it says special election, and here it's special election, probably it's not something that comes up every, every year, every other year. Uh, this, this election will not cost the city money because there is a special election already won, so it must cost the city money. So, that's what I was wanting to clarify. Alright, so, before we get any further, uh, I need to go ahead and make a motion and a second. There, I need to go further. So, you pointed out, and correctly, the, uh, the change to owing to owning.
Yes.
And I don't need two more, there are just typographical errors, but the issue is, we have to submit this to Teresa over at the county, and she is very particular, and we need to be very particular, but there are a few other little changes because these, this will actually appear on the ballot. If you look on page four, in section, under collection of tax, section B, the fourth line down, it says tax, we start in the second sentence, tax payer paying the tax, shall report and give the tax collect, upon form provided by the commission and as directed by the commission, but in not event. Well, that should be no, so, what I would suggest we do, because there are just a few other typographical errors, we have, somebody makes a motion to amend this, to correct these typographical, these specific typographical errors, and you pass it as amended, so what we sent to Teresa has corrected these typographical errors. Because if we don't do that, then we'll have to send what we actually passed to Teresa, and then there will be like three typographical errors in it, which won't change the intent of anything, but I just wanna send something that I wanna make sure it's perfectly aligned with the scent. So, that's one, one typographical error. Another is on the same page, the very last line, in A, a separate AP tax permit was obtained from this commission for each location, and it says, where at the person. That should just say where the person, business, or entity conducts a business, that is subject. So, I would strike the at, so that this says, for each location, where each person. Everybody see that? And then there was another typographical error in section four, the copy of this ordinance shall be given to the points taken where the elected commissioners have the necessary election officials, that should say so that the necessary election officials and supplies may be provided. That won't be on the ballot, so that one's not, not as big, but we don't want any typographical errors on the ballot that the actual voters will see. And those are the ones I saw, and then the mayor had the one about owing, that should be owing. So, before you guys vote on this, um, I would just recommend someone make a motion to amend the typographical errors that have been pointed out. Just to amend a motion to amend the typographical errors. Do you represent, any discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Alright, the amendments will be made, now, now will be the motion, uh, and a second to approve. Let's just prove it as amended, as amended. Make a motion to approve this amendment. As soon as we have a motion approved, amended, table, right, a second, any discussion? And I will say this, and I have had many people that have done the meeting and requested that we at least bring this up with council, and this is the way to bring it up to the council. So, it's, it's up to you if you wanna put it on. Alright, we've got motion and a second, now I'm gonna ask Mr. Tye for roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In the administration of funds, uh, what are D? And I probably just not thinking straight. So, the commission is the body that determines the use of City of Truman Advertising Fund to fund, that is not designated to the city parks system. What is it designated to if it's not designated to the city parks system? I might not think clearly.
So.
I might miss something.
So, well, that's right. Uh, when you read it, I think you can read the whole thing and see, it talks, it says specifically the next particular funds granted to the A and P funds shall be used for the construction, reconstruction, extension, equipment, improvement, repair, operation of the city parks system, or for the payment of principal of interest on these, and extra funds associated with such projects. That's primarily what this is gonna be used for. There are other funds, as we've talked about, indeed, for administrative costs, associated with collecting and managing the fund, the funds, uh. There are other, there are other ways, there are other uses than simply the parks, that the, that certain funds will have to be spent, and it will be the commission who will decide how to spend those. So, for instance, if there's so much money there, and the, uh, A and P commission decided they needed to hire an employee due to X, Y, and Z, that's not specifically on city parks. It would be on the commission to decide how to spend those funds. But primarily, as you see, the money shall be used for all of those things related to city parks. Any other questions? Okay. Now, I'm gonna ask Mr. Tye for roll call vote, please.
Greg Parker.
No.
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 Bonnie Winkles.
No.
Tara Rudge.
Four.
James Slickner's absent.
Jerry Bradley.
Four.
Jason Stewart.
Four.
Lynn Smith is absent.
Hazel Riley.
Four.
Don.
Is that enough?
Yes.
Do you do it?
Four.
One, two, three, four, five, three. Is that right?
Yes.
You have to be two thirds of the parties for George. Mr. President, George, the council, my opinion. I wanna make sure, and I'm sure that it's well, I don't know all the laws. So, just to clarify, the majority of those present will be George's. I believe it's the majority of the council, which requires six votes. We've got five. So, we're gonna, uh, we'll vote the most, please, right? With that, tell. Or the trails, if we're not going to. Alright, now, I'm gonna read a report from the, uh, Truman Water Works audit, some required by law, and we can read this to you, it's not very long, but I have to read this to you. The mayor, members of the city council, the city of Truman, Arkansas, we are engaged to audit financial statements to City of Truman, Arkansas Water Works since December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. As we stand for fire, we provide you with the following information, audit, and we also appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and discuss this information further, since a two-way dial-in can provide valuable information for the audit process. Our responsibility under U.S. general incentive auditing standards and government auditing standards, as stated in our engagement letter, dated January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, our responsibility as described by professional standards is to express opinions about whether the financial statements are prepared or management, with your oversight, authority, credit, and presentation, in all material respects, informed to U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. Our audit of the financial statements, statements does not relieve you or management of your responsibilities. As part of our audit, we will consider the internal control of the City of Truman, Arkansas Water Works, such considerations solely for purposes determined by our audit procedures, and not to provide any insurance concerning such internal control. As part of obtaining reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free or material misstatement, we will also perform tests of City of Truman, Arkansas Water Works compliance with certain provisions, laws, regulations, contracts, and contracts. However, providing an opinion on compliance with those provisions is not an objective audit. Plans called timing of the audit, and an audit includes examining on a test basis evidence supporting the amounts and disclosure in the financial statements, therefore, all audit will involve judgment about the number of transactions to be examined and the areas to be tested. All audit will include obtaining and understanding of the entity and its environment, including internal controls sufficient to assess the risk of material misstatements of the financial statements and the design and nature, timing, and extent of further audit pursuit. Material misstatements may result from, one, errors, two, fraudulent financial reporting, three, misappropriation of assets, four, violations of laws or government or regulations that are attributable to the entity or to acts by management or employees acting or acting as a. We will generally communicate our significant findings at the conclusion of audit, however, some matters could be communicated sooner, particularly if significant difficulties are encountered during the audit where assistance is needed to overcome difficulties, or if the difficulty may be to modify opinion. We will also communicate any internal control related matters that are required to be communicated on a professional standard. We have identified the following significant risks and material misstatements as part of our audit in place. According to the G A A S, significant risks include management override of controls, and G A A S presumes that revenue recognition is a significant risk. Accordingly, we have considered these as significant risks. That is, uh, the common saying, no, your CPAs are only do our, our audit for Truman Water Works, and they have already, started the audit. Mr. Payton has already given a four on the water, he is our water guy, so I can't expound on his four any other, uh, way, uh, other than to say that we want this resolved as much as anyone, and if we knew the action to clearing the water up faster, we'd sure do it, and we've already been done. Our employees are taking a beating, an unfair beating over this situation, and I hate it totally. We will, as always, gladly listen to people, uh, people and their possible solutions that we have already tried or looked at. We're open to suggestions, and if we can, good or haven't already done, and we'll look to do it. Um, the fire station is still on schedule at the moment for late September or early October. Uh, we're still hoping for construction to begin on the groundwater tanks soon, uh, but it may be, uh, it may be October, we're hoping to August, to begin in August, but it may be October due to the delay of power service on the property. Uh, and again, it's a smart stuff, the E P A or E D A, when we got the grant, we gotta do all of this paperwork and this paperwork, Mr. Gasway's gotta fill out paperwork, our engineer, I have to fill out sections, so we'll make sure we do it correctly and legally. Uh, we're waiting on this, uh, this kind of service for the property, hoping we'll get it back real soon, and then we can continue on. Uh, we are still in talks with two companies come through that will bring new jobs to town, and one of those companies is the reason for the resolution to sell the property. As soon as they set the announcement today, we will notify you all in the ceremony, they are really getting excited about this, and, and they're ready to, to do this, we just gotta get all, all the necessary stuff done. Um, we'll have another announcement in a few days of a well-known business chain opening in town. Uh, I was informed by R, and I can't expound on that again, the client, it's their responsibility unless they give us permission to make it happen, and we don't wanna take that away. Um, I was informed by R dot, the streets that we have listed on the street grant, uh, that job will let out, February twenty twenty-five, so hopefully we will get those streets overlaid in early twenty twenty-five. The dust festival is just around the corner, and looks to be even bigger than last year's current record crowd, with half of that department coming back to town, it'll be even more rides than last year. That's our report. Mr. Tye, do we have any public comments?
John Paul Thompson, and one, Martin Nas.
Mr. Thompson, you're first, you have, you have three minutes.
I just got two questions. Uh, per, minding your phone conversation last month, Jay Paul, you stated that when we were talking about ordinances, that you were going through and checking all the ordinances, and any of them that the council had passed that is now illegal, you were terminating, getting rid of.
What, what, say that again, then?
You, you stated that you weren't, you were going through the ordinances, and any ordinance that you saw that the council had passed, that over time has been, it's illegal now, it's not within the laws, you were getting rid of. My question is, have you terminated or revised any ordinance since you've been in office without the council approval?
First of all, let me answer the first part of the question. Uh, what I said was, there have been some ordinances that were passed, that were completely legal, and that we would re, re-address those ordinances as I come to them and correct them to make them legal. And that was what I said about that. Uh, have I changed any ordinances without the council approval? Actually, it's not. That's what I need to know.
My second question is on the water. I'm not gonna bash anybody, I just have a question. The, the pump that's sitting here on the, on the property, it's at nine hundred and eighty-five feet deep. The new pump that we drilled is twelve hundred and forty foot deep. The other pump that I was talking, we changed the other day, it's sitting right at a thousand and fifty feet. We've got three pumps, correct?
We have to have five.
Five, okay. But we, in the last, we've only used three, correct?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, is it possible, have we talked to the well company, that they went to deep?
I don't know how they would determine that, I'm not a well driller, and I, I don't mean that, I'm not a well driller.
I don't know either, that's why I'm asking the question.
I, I know. I don't know. The, the only experience is when rural water drills a well off by, by the Grove, and so I was there and saw that, know how they drill it, and what they're actually looking for when they get there, they're going into that Wilcox aquifer, which is a, a sand, and I don't know how they determine what's the best place to stop. I would say that's between the well drilling and an inch deep, so.
That was just my question, 'cause I, I understand, you know, the old well that went back a couple years ago, this well right here, where we're ten seventy feet of each other, but you add another two hundred and fifty feet to that, is it possible we're to deep? Could that be issue?
I don't, I don't think it's part of the issue, I think the issue with the cloudiness in the water is typical of all of that water, whether you stop at nine hundred feet, or you went to fifteen hundred, I don't know how deep the sand that was there where they're at. That sand may only be a seventy-foot pocket that, uh, as the ground contours, that you had to go to that eleven hundred feet to get to it, I'm not, I don't know how that's laid out.
I don't either.
I mean, honestly, there, that is always, I couldn't tell you that that's not a problem, but I can't tell you that it is. When they drill that well, they make no guarantee of the quality of water that you're gonna get, uh, they do it to, to their standards.
Can we call them and ask them if that could be a problem? They, I mean, I don't know, I'm just.
I don't have a good answer for your question. I, I'm, I'll just tell you that. Uh, I don't see that it's an issue, like I said, this aquifer that we pulled out of runs, I know from West Memphis to Jonesboro, and everybody that's in that runs into the same issue. Uh, some wells clear up faster than others, uh, it's, it's just a point, and I think I told you on the phone the other day, the well companies, when they're gonna drill a well, will not make a guarantee that they're gonna put a well in there that you can develop. So, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that they do to the best of their ability to get into what they consider to be the best water there, and then you just have to develop it and say. At this point in time, you, you can't go back into that well, the only thing that you might could do, and I don't know that type of well driller to tell me that, and make it deeper, but you can't make it shallow.
Okay, that was my question.
That would mean drilling another.
How far are these two wells apart from each other?
Well, this one is at the PlayStation here, one at the end of Delta is the one we're using now, and then we've got one this, at the end of Data Street. Last of the quarter mile. Do what? Last of the quarter mile. Yes.
Between all three of them, but all three of them with different waters.
Yeah.
Where, where does the Maple Grove, right, when they drill water? Is it coming out from the city?
It is right now, when we merged with the city, we were using that well, of course, with rural water, but the population now of, as we come into the city Truman, that well is gonna require fluoride, uh, that we, that we put in the city water, but we didn't enroll because it's a population thing, and so we're not able to use it yet until we get that fluoridation equipment, and, and our engineers working, working on that, so that we can put that pump in service too. Which kinda may have helped this situation a little bit, but that well's not big enough that we can push all that water back to Truman, so.
The rural people are certainly getting water off the Maple Grove now?
Everything's getting water from Truman right now, we're not using that well on Maple Grove at all, because we can't add the fluoride to it, so I can't meet the health department standards, so. Anyone else?
Juan Martinez.
Yes, hi, good night to all, Juan Martinez, uh, on June eleventh, one of my mobile phones is going to condemned to demolish, right? Unfortunately, um, I need to travel to Mexico in the next, the last two months, twice, 'cause Mother-in-law passed away on, on June fourteenth, and Grandma passed away on July eighth, so that took me like a month, but my property is almost halfway done, and I come to ask him for, because they say we need a thirty, it's on the corner of the.
Two, two, right.
I spoke to Mr. Martinez, I, I had many of us spoke to him, he had the C W A's indication was, he has, he's quickly tore down the part of it, it's all, it's gripping out of shape, and we said as he took it apart, he was gonna scrap it all apart, and he said after after the back, he found out all that's still in good shape, and he wants to close that end wall and put sheet metal back on it, and use that as like a storage building, move towards the back, and I told him this wall, but it was good, and the wall was safe, just to use for storage building, sure, 'cause he cleaned the worst part, where it all fell in, tornadoed in.
Yes, exactly.
He cut all that, and welded that out, he's got the useful section, and what he's planning to be, he wants to put it back, like I said, and use it as storage building, which I told him would be fine, and he had, he had to go to Mexico.
Yeah.
Lost in the family, but he did not do it, if there be any problems there, he wanted him up here, to the shelf.
I talked to him again the third day.
Juan, with the way of motion, could you give him another thirty days?
Thank you so much.
Here, grab a second, any discussion? All the papers say aye? Opposed, no. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, boss.
There's a right wing motion, here, grab a second, all the papers say aye?